The place to eat in Uphaula is the Cajun Corner. The Cajun Corner located at 114 North Uphaula Avenue is a place where you can let the good times roll and enjoy the taste of Louisiana. Try our signature New Orleans stuffed fish with your choice of red snapper, gruffer, or tilapia. Taste the Creole flavor of our Mardi Gras stuffed shrimp or North Shore pasta. At the Cajun Corner, 114 North Uphaula Avenue, we've got it all, from cocktails, appetizers, amazing salads, steaks, seafood, and pasta, to tempting desserts you just can't resist. Y'all come have a ball at the Cajun Corner and let us serve you like the kings and queens of Mardi Gras.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. We'll have invitation by the Reverend Richard Hunter from First African Baptist Church. And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Eternate God, our heavenly Father, we come in the precious name of our Son Jesus thanking you for your wonderful blessing. We pray, Lord, your blessing up in this city council, men and women, as they deliberate over the people's business. Blessed are may I as he lead this city in his most difficult time. Blessed are chief, our police department, and all of the officials of our city. Then, oh God, our Father, we ask you to remember our nation. Blessed are President that lead us in this most difficult time. Blessed America, keep us safe. And Father, all this we ask in the precious name of our Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Go on, please.
President.
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 Mrs. Grass. President.
Okay, we have no honors and recognition tonight. So the first thing, we have the approval of the agenda. We need a motion and a second to approve the order of the city council agenda dated July 3rd, 2017.
Take a question, please. Approve the order.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor, let it be known by the word "I." Opposes, nay. As have. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. All the agendas have been sent out to council members for their review and their reading. And we have two items on the consent agenda. We need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. And it includes the minutes of June 19th, 2017. And we need the claim docket dated July 28th, 2017. I mean June. In the amount of $32,692.54. What's your issues?
Seven minutes.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the word "I." All opposes, nay. Motion carried. Okay, next. We give from the mayor.
Thank you, Josh. Not a lot tonight. We do have our annual fireworks, Fourth of July celebration tomorrow at Lake Point. It'll be a pretty big deal. We've been growing every year, and I think last year we had between 3,000 and 4,000 people. So looking forward to it. This year, the National Guard has gotten involved really big in this thing, and they're bringing in a Blackhawk helicopter. Decided to see that. And a couple of rock climbing halls, but we've got four bands playing, so we've been planning this all year. Probably keep what, six, seven meetings through the course of the year. So it ought to be a big deal, and I want to thank Uphaula TV. They're going to livestream it so people at home that nobody can't get out can actually see the fireworks tomorrow night. So thank you all for that. Also, we now have at the Chamber, the Smithsonian Waterways exhibit through our Main Street. And they're going to be here till the first week of August, and everyone needs to certainly get out and see that. It's pretty interesting. You going to introduce?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Keith, tell us about the softball tournament we got coming. Is softball or baseball?
It's softball.
Softball.
Open ceremonies are Friday night, beginning at 6:00 at the Chamber of Commerce. And we're really excited about that, bringing everybody downtown and showing off that part of the community. The Sweet Teens, five and six-year-old girls. So that's going to be a lot of fun. Lots of people. And there's the Angels, there's nine and 10-year-old girls, nine and 10 each of those divisions. Two teams on the field to let you play the girls. So we're looking for a big turnout. Start playing Saturday morning, have three or four hours break in between, and then start Saturday night. See, it's a state tournament, so we'll play Sunday after, or Sunday night, and Monday Tuesday, we're going to finish up, you know, when we get around noon. And we'll have our final tournament starting Thursday for four days, some older kids, older guys. So looking for a good time.
Billy has to make $700,000 if I wasn't picking somebody since that minute.
That's right.
If you didn't hear him, he said we're bringing them downtown for the opening night, so we're going to put a lot of people downtown for that night.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be good for the businesses down there.
They're excited. Our host families have been in contact with each of the names and welcome them here and tell them what's going on and what's happening. And they're excited to come to the new park. Some of them's already been here, they have in their local area, but there's a lot of them that have not been in Uphaula, so they're looking forward to it. And there's always going to be something we forget, you know, something small this year instead of 2014. I did a big boo-boo there, but it's all right. I got sticky notes everywhere.
All you learn from it, real quick.
Ooh, yeah, but anyway, love to have y'all out and join us. It's going to be really cool out of Creek Town, you know, the wind blows. No naps or anything.
That's the same thing as fireworks, just like. Also, Shawala Drive, the Shawala Drive project will start next Monday. And I just need to notify the public of that. They'll do it on Facebook and several other areas, but that'll try and finish that before school starts. So that's a route to the schools right there. Also, I think our sidewalk project, downtown sidewalk project, will be complete here probably by the end of next week, Tim?
Yes.
The only thing left is the rails up there on 431, on the east side of 431. So looking forward to getting that done. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, ordinances and resolutions. In the visitors, we don't have any visitors, okay. Next, we have our ordinances and resolutions. We have the second reading of the Sunday alcohol sales first.
Okay. Ordinance number 2017-7, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Uphaula, Alabama, Chapter 10, relating to alcohol beverages to authorize Sunday alcohol sales in the City of Uphaula.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I will open the floor for our public hearing. This will be our second public hearing. Now, I just want you to know this now. First of all, like I told you last council meeting, please respect each other. Please respect each other. This is not your town, it's our town. Another thing, when one is talking, do not disturb. We will ask you to please, when you get ready to speak, please come to the podium, face the council, and state your name, state your address for records. Now, at the same time, this is not an open, shared case. I don't expect anyone in here to ask a question and someone over here answer it, because you're not talking to them, you're talking to the council. You are addressing the council and the attorney only. Now, any outburst, any disrespect, you know, I love all of you, and I got to tell you the truth, but if you disrespect the council, we will ask you to please leave. Don't want to do this, so respect each other. Now, so what we'll do is, we're going to give you two minutes. When you get through with your two minutes, Alisa will tell you when your two minutes is up. Then raise your hands so I can give you permission to come up next and speak. Now, please, let's respect each other, okay? Any question to me before we start? Remember, you are not talking to the audience, you're talking to the council. Those that want to speak at the public hearing, please raise your hand so records can be taken. All right, let's start with you first. State your name, state your address, and come to the podium.
I'm Bobby Gunner, and I live at 520 Cherry Street. I guess you know what town. But I'm against the Sunday alcohol sales. I feel like we don't need it. And then, too, a long time ago, our forefathers put in there to respect the Lord on Sunday. And that's why we have no alcohol sales on Sunday, is to respect the Lord. And we're not respecting Him anymore. And we can see this in society altogether. People don't respect our flag no more. People don't respect each other anymore. And here we are saying, well, you know, we can go ahead and have alcohol sales on Sunday. It won't hurt nobody. You know, we got to wine and dine these folks and all. Hey, you ain't got to wine and dine them. You can serve them a sweet tea. That's a southern favorite. And if they don't like that, they can drink water. But alcohol, we don't need it on Sunday. And mainly, it's just out of respect for God, not out of trying to hurt somebody's business. And besides, you know, Georgetown, they ain't got much competition anyway. Who wants to drive all the way two miles to get drunk? They'd do that later. But I just encourage you to put God first and not money or taxes. We can live without the taxes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gunnar. Hold on, ma'am. Please hold on, ma'am. I think I saw this gentleman second. And I forgot to tell y'all while you come, sir, let me say this. If you are speaking with a group, pick your spokesperson and let him give the ideas and the warnings that you want to present to us, okay? Thank you, sir. Please excuse.
No problem. Thank you for your time. My name's Craig Packard, 204 Cypress Cove Drive. Appreciate the opportunity to talk today. I'm the general manager at Humminberg. A number of you know me. And I'd like to just reinforce a lot of the points that Sally Garrison made in her letter to the editor a while back, and just lend a little perspective from the business point of view, because I think that, you know, business is, you know, one of the most critical building blocks to make this community sustainable and successful and to grow. So from our point of view, since we got acquired by Johnson Outdoors a number of years ago, we've hired like 80 professional and technical positions in addition to our direct hourly jobs. So that's very good growth. It's good people, bringing good people in the community, bringing good wages, and brings a lot of good opportunities. It's been very difficult to recruit, you know, anyone knows that, in any town, with, you know, trying to get talent, trying to bring people in. And this single resolution or ordinance, this is not magic, this is just one of the building blocks that we need. In the economic development plan, we've identified a number of building blocks that just add together to keep getting us together to our goal of being a sustainable community. So I think that's just one of the important ones, because I know, when I go to our management team and I say, "We've got to recruit for some engineers, we've got to recruit for some managers," if I'm not capable of doing that, and we actually give up, and we've given up a couple of times over the years because we just couldn't find someone to move into the community, I got to move those jobs elsewhere, to Georgia or Minnesota, and we don't want to do that. We want to have every little thing, every benefit we possibly can have to be, you know, a normal progressive town with some things to do on a Sunday and be able to bring people and their family in to enjoy that. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next.
Bobby and I are a group who've been married 54 years, thanks to Jesus, soon, but now we prayed about what to do or not, and we didn't know who was going to share, I didn't know who's going to share. I'm Carol. I'm Carol Gunner, 520 Cherry Street. Okay, I had about four and a half minutes. I didn't time it, but I can only have two, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll just go on to the last part I had, and that was, when I was a youngster, I heard about something that happened in another town, and a bad wreck, it was a real bad wreck, and when the fathers and the parents were called to come, most of the kids in the car were underage. And this happened. And it was obvious that they'd been drinking, and most of them were killed, if not all of them. They were underage, and one of the fathers especially just hung with it. He said, "I want to know of any police, I'm going to get to the bottom of this. I am going to find out if there's anybody that's, you know, helping these restaurants to sell or whatever, and I'm going to find out, you know, the store that sells to underage, anybody connected with this." And he was just outright, he was so upset. And who would do this, you know? And when he got home, he saw his liquor cabinet open and a note, and it said, "Dad, I hope you don't mind, but we wanted to party tonight." That's...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Main Street Family Urgent Care. Relief has a new address in Uphaula. Main Street Family Urgent Care is now open on South Uphaula Avenue, just across from Wind Dixon. From cuts to broken bones, strep, throat, and flu, they can help you heal and feel better fast. Open seven days a week, Main Street Family Urgent Care provides high-quality medical care for their entire family, right here, right now, keeping you close to home and getting you back to help them fast.
Main Street Family Urgent Care. Heal better, feel better fast.
Okay, new young lady.
Hi, I'm Sarah Meek Garrison. I live at 305 St. Francis Road. So I'm a senior at the University of Alabama, and I think that Sunday sales is a progressive move that I support because it is attractive to young people, and that is Uphaula's future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison.
My name is Louise Howard, 501 Five Mile Road. And I would like to point out, in the past, when we had the consideration of the entertainment district, there was a lot of concern expressed about public drunkenness. And I would ask, have any of you seen it? I say, "No," because we have responsible adults in this community. The problem we have is there are places where young people are going, they're taking their own alcohol, they're not consuming it downtown. There are cans of alcoholic beverages, I find, on the median at the gazebo when I come in and go to work in the morning. Cans are not sold in the restaurants, only bottles. So they're bringing their own. So I take, I feel that that's their responsibility to drink responsibly, it's not ours to judge them or to control them. This is a very progressive move for the city to consider, to help the businesses downtown. The number of people that we have that come through this community, going to and from the coast, I think is a great place. I've seen anglers walk out of a restaurant because they cannot obtain a beer to have with their dinner after they come off the water. We have a tremendous amount of appeal for anglers that come to this community. The ballgames, you're going to have adults, you're going to want to have a drink after they've been outside, and I'm not saying they're going to drink till they're drunk, they're going to have one drink to quench their thirst. I think that this is a progressive thing, and I don't feel that it would be disrespectful as it's big afternoon, after 12 o'clock noon, sales, and I think this would be a very positive move for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, yes, sir. Mr. Garrison.
Thank you. I'm Ed Garrison, 1936 Country Club Road, and I agree with the points the previous speaker made. And I also think that it's important for our community to pass this ordinance. And in a progressive nature, we're sandwiched between Columbus and Duthon. We are a tourist community, we're on the lake. Tourism, I don't know what percent of our budget revenue comes from tourism, but I imagine it's a large percentage, and I think that's the direction we need to focus in. And I think this, without it, is holding our community back, and so I would very much be in favor of its passage.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Elizabeth Davis, 435 West Broad Street. And I, too, I'm an outsider, so unlike folks that have lived here and been in Uphaula for years, I've been here about a year and a half and superintendent of the school system, and see it as an important step in moving forward and basically supporting the businesses, the tourism, the taxes. It's important. We're working as hard as we can on our side to make the school system something that helps recruit, and that's one of the things, even to recruit teachers and families. And we struggle, just like Mr. Packard said, to recruit folks sometimes because it's something as simple as rental property, and so we're going above and beyond to help with that. And to be progressive and provide everyone with that opportunity, that's an important thing, because the more that people stay here and shop and eat, you know, it's not all about the drinking, it's about the eating too on Sundays. After church, the only restaurant that I can seem to find to sit down in to eat right now is El Jalisco, El Jalisco, because they evidently closed, and the Cajun restaurant, but those things, if more are open on Sundays because they can sell alcohol, people are going to go and eat, like my family. We're going to go and eat lunch and supper so I don't have to cook. So it's just an important thing to move the bigger picture of the City of Uphaula forward. So, and I just, I'm in support of that, because when you look at bigger picture, it's important as a city.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, do we have anyone else? Not the time to speak. Okay. Ms. Gunnar.
Okay, did you have, I was just going to stand up and if y'all had any questions, give y'all an opportunity to ask any questions. I was just going to go over the ordinance itself, explanatory. However, still, you know, selling to minors, this doesn't have any impact on that. We, you know, that would still be illegal. And basically, that would be restaurants and hotels under paragraph A. And currently, we don't have a hotel that serves, but if there's not a licensed hotel that has that capacity, but they would be able to. Lake Point is not affected because it's a state facility, and so they're under separate rules and regulations. We don't issue them a license for what they do there, okay? And then, B is the sale of beer and table wine at retail. They're properly licensed by the ABC Board and the City of Uphaula. All sales could not begin until 12:00 noon, and they would have to end at 9:30 PM. The council, based on the local act that was passed by the legislature, y'all've got the power, anything after 12:00. So, you know, there's, the state law requires businesses to shut down at 2:00 AM on Sunday morning. So if you're licensed, you can sell Saturday all the way into 2:00 AM. So there's a window, but because of the local act, we can't go earlier than 12:00 noon, and so that's what, so that's what that is. And, but 9:30 is what we've put in there, and this does not impact, if there is a private club or that's got a private license that can already sell on Sunday, then this doesn't impact that, but, because there are several businesses that have private club licenses, like the VFW, the Country Club, and, you know, several others. And so then, but, like package stores, they would not be able to open. This does not apply to package stores, liquor stores, or other businesses that have a club license that does not enable them to open up on a Sunday. So we have, as far as currently, if y'all want to hear the names of the businesses that currently have a liquor license, I can give y'all that information. I brought that with me. It's the River City Grill, Graffiti's, Cajun Corner, Brickstone Burgers and Brews, El Jalisco, The Bird's Nest, Old Mexico, and Sam's Kitchen and Grill. So, and then, those are the restaurants. I did not bring the convenience stores and the grocery store names for those, but, anyway, so that is, so that's what we've got. And I know, I believe Chief Watkins, I believe he also had some information that he wanted to share with y'all as well.
The issue of driving was, while intoxicated, was brought up momentarily. There's limited research on the impact directly related to Sunday sales and crime and/or driving under the influence. The best study was done over a 15-year period and considered 13 states. Out of the 13 states, New Mexico was the only one that showed an increase in fatalities related to driving under the influence after they relaxed the Sunday sale laws in New Mexico. There really wasn't an answer for that other than the long distances that people that live in New Mexico had to drive between destination, between cities, and there was some discussion that some of the native people that lived there were more predisposed to alcoholic diseases and things like that. Of the other studies, there is a consensus that crimes, especially property crimes, would increase on Sunday. But that's, you know, you're taking a Sunday that you don't have alcohol, a Sunday that you do have alcohol. They're saying that the crimes after you pass the ordinance does increase on Sundays, when you just look at Sundays. But over the course of the year, the entire crime trend for the different cities and states remains unchanged. You know, that would be akin to a motel in Panama City having free rooms on Wednesdays. Our traffic flow would be greater on Wednesdays, the number of accidents would increase on Wednesdays. But throughout the course of the year, that would not have a dramatic impact on the overall traffic, crashes, or anything else in the city. So, you know, based on the research, the crimes do increase on that one day, but overall, it remains neutral.
Thank you, Chief, for that survey. Okay. Anyone else have a question? Okay. Excuse me, ma'am. I didn't see you. I apologize.
We could, you know, I have shared, and can I ask a question, or is it, is that over?
No, ma'am.
Okay, when you say question, is that okay?
No, I was talking.
Okay.
Okay. With that in mind, what's the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I feel that we need to move Euphala ahead aggressively, and I beg that we accept this ordinance and put it in place.
Okay, it's been properly moved, and it's been properly set. Are there any questions? At this time, we have a roll complete.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Flora?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes. Okay, with that said, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash seven. Okay, we'll move on. Move on with the resolutions. Resolution forty dash two thousand seventeen, we have a weed abatement on South TV McCue Boulevard. Are anybody here, the Williams, or anybody that needs to talk on that particular line? Okay, with that in mind, what's the wishes of the council on resolution forty dash two thousand seventeen?
Make a motion to adopt resolution forty dash seventeen.
All right, it's been properly moved, and seven. Are there any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion care.
For southern cooking at its best, it's Michelle's of Georgetown, located on Highway eighty-two east, just across the bridge in beautiful downtown Georgetown. Michelle's has a daily buffet from eleven A.M. to three P.M., and, wait, it's the weekend. On Saturday and Sunday, they have a delicious breakfast buffet from seven A.M. to ten thirty A.M., and at five thirty P.M. on Friday and Saturday, it's one of the largest and freshest seafood buffets that you can find. So, for southern cooking at its best, or the freshest seafood buffet around, it's Michelle's of Georgetown, seven 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 Highway eighty-two east in Georgetown, Georgia. All times are eastern.
So, resolution forty dash two thousand seventeen passes. All right, next resolution is forty-one dash two thousand seventeen, weed abatement on South Orange Street. That's the Dolabes family. Anyone here to represent that family? Okay, what's the wishes of the council on resolution forty-one dash two thousand seventeen?
Make a motion for one dash twenty seventeen to be approved.
All right, it's been properly moved and set. Are there any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Those opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion care. All right, next weed and abatement we have is forty-two, uh, resolution forty-two dash two thousand seventeen, that's owned by the Wilsons. That's on South TV McCue Boulevard. First of all, is anybody here to speak up for that particular line? Okay, Knight, what's the wishes of the council?
Make a motion that we accept the resolution.
All right, it's been moved. Do I have a second? All right, it's been moved and properly set. Are there any questions? All right, all of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Those opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion care. All right, next one, we have another weed abatement, forty-three dash two thousand seventeen, is owned by the Berry family on South TV McCue Boulevard. What's the wishes of the council on that particular resolution?
Make a motion for three twenty seventeen to be approved.
All right, it's been properly approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and set. Are there any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Those opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion care. Motion passes. All right, we have one more abatement, forty-four dash two thousand seventeen, that's on two thousand one Nancy Ross Drive. Anybody from that family able to speak on that particular line? Okay, if not, what's the wishes of the council on it?
Make a motion for four twenty seventeen to be approved.
All right.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and set. Are there any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Those opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion care. All right, that takes care of all of the resolutions. Now, we'll come down to the board appointments. All right, we have a resume here, and for the Conagra Library Board, we have one, two, we have four. Wanna do it separately, or since they all?
They all wanna be written.
Let's just do this.
Okay, they all want wishes to be real. So, you wanna do it by one? Okay.
Just a group.
Wanna do it by a group? Okay, it's on, it's a three-year term. What's your wishes on Jeanette Baxley, Merrill Dillon, Mamie Hamilton, and Kate Whaley? That's on the board for the library. It's a three-year term. What's your wishes?
I'll make the motion that we adopt these four for their three-year terms. Second.
It's been properly moved and set. Are there any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Those, thank you. You need to take them. All right, down to the regular. Okay, our regular, our regular agenda, let's go with the finance first. What happened, Ms. Flurry?
No report.
No report? All right. Gonna have no reports for finance. Next, we have education, library, zoning in the chamber. Mrs. Grace?
I don't have anything, but if she wants to.
I was just gonna stand up and tell y'all, thank you very much for the progressive move tonight. We appreciate it. As you all know, the chamber has been for Sunday alcohol sales. We think it can make a big impact on our community in a positive way. As Mayor Tibbs mentioned earlier, we have a companion exhibited in our chamber, and our chambers first Friday, this Friday, seven thirty to eight thirty is truly moved. We'd love for y'all to all come by, and kind of, I sent y'all a report, you saw most of the things we're doing. I did wanna mention, we're reaching out to work with Representative Martha Robey and bringing her here in August to meet with our industry leaders, so I'll be back in touch with you guys on that, get y'all a time and date, so y'all can come by and meet with her.
Anybody else? Anything?
We're just getting ready for the school year.
Okay. All right, parks, recreation, and airport. Council and Cox?
One final time, I wanna thank the council very much for your support of the Playground of Dreams. It is rocking and rolling out there. It's constant. Appreciate the mayor and the town for coming up with some money to pave that street, and the parking lot next to it. Really, really appreciate it. And if you wanna know how everybody feels, it won't take them long, just sit a little bit, and listen. All you gotta do is listen to all the kids, and laughing, and playing, and having fun, so, thank y'all.
You're doing a good job, Keith.
Thank you.
Keith, I had a guy at the, just a minute, I had a little boy, I think, I guess he was about four or five, he was in church, and he came out to the park, and somebody told him, it said, I don't know who, but he hollered out, "Councilman Knight, I had a good time at the park." You know, I could've went on the table, but I said, "Thank you."
That makes it all work around here.
Okay, ma'am.
Just a very quick, I wasn't expecting to speak to this call apart, but just, we'll send invitations to you all, but for our Institute Day, August seventh, we are thrilled that we will have Barbara Dooley, who's Vince Dooley's wife. She will be our guest speaker. If you haven't heard her speak before, she is hilarious, and entertaining, and motivating, but she, she will be our guest speaker that day on August seventh, that'll be at the community center. So, we're thrilled, and we'll send you all invitations, but just wanted you to know that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, anyone else? All right, next, street sanitation and cemetery, Councilman Robinson. I mean, the mayor hit on on the sidewalks, the Chawalla Drive, so, him and his, doing a good job, so, that's it. Okay, thank you. Police, fire, personnel. I have already talked to the chief, and I'm gonna get a chance to chat with the mayor. We have been getting so many complaints and action going out at these compartments, these departments, I did the Chatterhoo Court and those places, but we need to get together, meet with the chief and the people that's over these complaints, because chief and his department is running over to these places, I think I told you this last council meeting, three and four times, and when they see, hear the police coming, they all disperse. So, now, that's taking up their time. I know it's their job, but we need to get with these people that's over these homes, and just let them know, we need help. You know, there was a time, and I can remember this, I never lived in a project, but I can remember when, if something happened like that, and the report got back to the office, then it made it hard for the fam. Maybe we should go back to that. Also, I mean, it's kinda, it's kinda rough, and you have a lot of fights, and I know most of you don't be around where there's a lot of fighting going on, and cursing, and knifing, and all that stuff, but it's rough. And chief, I just wanna tell you, if you look in your package, you see a report from the fire chief, he's doing a tremendous job. We thank you, sir, and we ask you to keep the good work up. I see him exercising, I guess, every afternoon, running in the police department, but you two chiefs, y'all are doing a very, very, very good job, very good, and I commend you. Keep up the good work. Now, I say this for last. I never heard, I never heard the next lady woman about to call up. I never heard her say hi, bye, or nothing. I just wanna hear from her myself. I don't wanna introduce her. I want the council, and I want the city of Euphala, especially the citizens, to listen to our newest lady on staff, Miss Elizabeth Conklin. Conklin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Conklin. And if you don't mind, please come to the podium, and just tell us a little something about you. Just a little.
Just a little something. Well, you'll judge my northern accent, then, if you heard me talk. But my name's Elizabeth Conklin. I've lived here in Euphala for about two and a half years. I'm an '07 graduate in human resources from Auburn, and my husband works at American Buildings, so I've got two small kids, and I'm excited to make you follow my home, and come here and start my career with the city. It's been great. I've been here about three weeks now, starting my third week.
Okay, we hope you enjoy your state, and we hope you get along with everybody, and everybody get along with you.
I will. Thank you.
Can you say, can you say y'all?
No, I don't. I say you guys.
You gotta learn to say y'all.
She's HR, 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 okay. Human resource risk management, right? Okay, with that said, anything else need to be said before the, before the council? You might see every council meeting I do this.
I make a motion with adjournment.
Okay. Good day to everybody, and we hope you all come back the next council meeting.
Welcome to Old Mexico. Old Mexico features great food, an adult beverage bar, and nightly specials at our family restaurant. Happy hour is from four thirty until seven P.M. six days a week. Our phone number is three three four six eight seven seventy seven seventy. Old Mexico, located at twelve forty-eight South Euphala Avenue. Hours are eleven to two, and four thirty until nine, Monday through Wednesday. Open till ten on Thursday through Saturday, and eleven until nine P.M. on Sunday. Old Mexico features the best authentic Mexican food with banquet and large party room that can be reserved. Old Mexico, unique to Euphala, twelve forty-eight South Euphala Avenue. Old Mexico, celebrating twenty-four years of business by owner Santiago and Salome Solario.